Sidoos massi, Madam Speaker. Buena estat des locuit. Senora Speaker, malaguzutape gesti i prinaponi desi nubbi. Kimena tres, natinaita, da malaguzu locuita discuti estina prinaponi. Good afternoon, Mr. and Mrs. Speaker. I would like to place Bill 19-32 in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Is that as substituted by the author?
As substituted by the author, that's correct, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the correction.
So, and you would like to speak on it?
Madam Speaker, several months ago, Senator Tommy Morrison and I and the Vice Speaker[40.76][40.76]introduced Bill 19, recognizing that on the island here, we have had an activity known as limited gaming going on for a number of years. In one activity in particular, the GNOC Bingo and other limited gaming bingos, it has been widely known throughout our community that that activity has been quite lucrative. And Madam Speaker, I would like to say that also supporting a number of excellent causes as nonprofit organizations. So Madam Speaker, understanding that, but also understanding that our community, particularly when it comes to the sports community, you know, there is much more diversity than, of course, just those that are in the Olympic class status to maybe realize competition at that level, and where they came from, and also just recognizing the situation that exists with our sporting facilities that our government supports throughout the island, we thought that it would be good to derive some of this revenue for the purposes of supporting those activities. So that was the, and is, remains to be, the intent of this Bill 19, Madam Speaker. We ran into a significant roadblock as that went forward. We were notified by the Attorney General that the promulgated rules and regulations that we were amending were in fact not promulgated properly, and that as far as they were concerned, they did not exist in statute. So, Madam Speaker, we met the two co-authors of this legislation and worked with the Attorney General's office to satisfy their concerns. So that is, yes, Madam Speaker, the reason, as you cited, the bill being substituted by the author. We changed the legislation to match current law as the identified activity is recognized, at least by this, now the chief legal officer of the island of Guam, the Attorney General, for it to be a legal activity. So now we have the substituted version. Madam Speaker, we also heard the voices, much like my good colleague Senator Morrison demonstrated this morning with the changes to the helmet law, or bill at this point, and realized that the proposed 20% was going to be too difficult and would actually put these nonprofits out of business as they had made us to understand in their testimony. As a matter of fact, I believe the committee report will show that when the discussion was actively going back and forth, there was at least one nonprofit that came up for the record after the good Vice Speaker mentioned that if there's going to be no working together on this, probably makes sense to just not have gaming on Guam at all. And a number of, at least one activity came up and said, "No, I don't think that's the, what we're asking for. We're just asking for some reason and some ability to move forward on this." So, we made the change, Madam Speaker, to reflect what was currently in the promulgated rules and regulations as a 4% gaming tax. So the substituted version, as substituted by the author, recognized that issue. The original bill, which still contains the information once again, Madam Speaker, that the original bill did also discuss an issue that exists till today, Madam Speaker. In the promulgated rules and regulations and also in this legislation and in other places in law, there's a discussion of a gaming commission that I'm not sure, but I'll go back as far as my recollection in public service, has never been impaneled, Madam Speaker. Never been put in place to work through the issues of regulating what we know is very lucrative limited gaming on Guam. So it recognized that, and it identified for the meantime the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, I believe, and/or his designee, their designee, to act in that capacity, to be able to get revenue tax up to speed. And Madam Speaker, very interestingly, one of the reasons why this was important as well is when we introduced this bill, it almost came as a shock to so many people that there actually was rules and regulations and that there actually was a proposal to tax it. So I recognized that also in the testimony that was put forward and said, "Well, something has to happen here, you know. It's probably because this gaming commission's never been put in place. Nobody's ever made these organizations aware, and revenue tax was even unaware of how to actually move forward and actually do this." So we all agreed, we all worked together, Madam Speaker, to recognize the condition of the law and to work within whatever exists in law to see if we could maybe derive some intent in moving forward. So Madam Speaker, we also mentioned, and we met subsequently, particularly with GNOC, Bob Steffi, because we wanted to make sure their concerns were taken into consideration. We addressed those concerns, Madam Speaker, by indicating to him that, and we'll see if it actually is contained here now or proffered amendments possibly, that the intent of this is to be a point-of-sale, pass-along tax as to not derive the revenue from their current operation so that we don't affect the good work that they're already doing. So as I say that, Madam Speaker, I'll just go into a little bit of the understanding of how actual lucrative this particular limited gaming is. Madam Speaker, we know that upwards of $14-plus million has been brought in with regard to the, at least just the GNOC lottery over the last several years, and most of that money did not stay on Guam, Madam Speaker, off island. Madam Speaker, the recognition that at least one organization that came forward, a golf organization, nonprofit, bingo nonprofit, indicated that their annual sales operations is about $9 million. There are 14, from what I understand, registered, recognized, licensed bingo operators. This is not cockfights, this is not all the other things that are contained in this bill. And so I think we can arrive at the possibility that there's a significant amount of revenue involved with this activity. But Madam Speaker, even at that, we wanted to make sure that we did not hurt those who would possibly be affected, so we called revenue tax, and they indicated to us that the senior centers are not affected by this because they're permitted, they're not licensed. So they're okay, and they do it for their luncheon and the other. So we wanted to make sure we stayed out of anybody's lane that's doing fundraising to not affect their funding either. Also, Madam Speaker, we were told by revenue tax that raffles are not included in this. So like the liberation raffle that's going on right now for the queens and the like, because they're not a licensed activity, they are a permitted activity, it's understood that they're doing things for benevolence or for the purposes of a real cause that is not revenue generating like $9 million, like $14 million, like $1 million here and $1 million there. So in recognizing that, Madam Speaker, we were very careful as well. It's been a deliberative process all along. So, Madam Speaker, then we arrive basically at what is the cause then when we say, what are we going to derive these revenues for? Madam Speaker, my good colleague Senator Morrison and I went to the Mayor's Council of Guam and made a presentation, and I believe he'll discuss his experiences as an athlete understanding what these revenues can go towards, and how we made our presentation to them, Madam Speaker. Identified in the legislation to be beneficiaries of this funding source is the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Mayor's Council, and also the Department of Education. Madam Speaker, in closing, I recognize that there is a relatively significant debate within our community about limited gaming, about the gaming commission, about what is legal and what is not legal. In closing, Madam Speaker, I simply put forward and asked my colleagues to consider supporting this measure because of the due diligence and the work that this committee has put into ensuring that this legislation complies with and is in concurrence with, and has a letter from the Attorney General's Office stating that it is in fact a legal activity that's recognized, and it is not a contested activity as described in Bill 19 for the purposes of deriving this revenue. And so, Madam Speaker, as I said earlier, while nonprofit status exists, and I definitely would not ever want to affect the operations of those that are doing the good work in our community, that really are not taking in the revenues and are not gaming particularly in a nonprofit, but nonprofit status seems like it has its benefits too. And I'll leave that to the public's judgment. I know that there's many people that enjoy bingo for their activity, but also understand that there may be a good opportunity for some public good. So Madam Speaker, I ask the body to consider this measure and to consider it on its merits and to vote on the affirmative of Bill 19. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sidoos massi.
Welcome Senator on the motion, Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for recognizing me to speak on this bill. While it's true that I'm one of the original cosponsors, and I've allowed my name to remain on this bill, I can't say that I am, that I support any gaming activity at all. And I'm embarrassed to admit that my motive for signing on as a cosponsor was to try to do some investigation so that I could prove a theory that I've had for many years about the fact that this community does not, I repeat, does not benefit from these activities. I've circulated to the members of the body what was attached as part of, as exhibit four of the Guam National Olympic Committee's presentation to the legislature. And though I hate to disagree with the main cosponsor, I think they can and should be held, made to pay a much higher price if this is going to go through. As you can see from their own report, Madam Speaker, over the last 10 years, they've managed to take $22,500,000 out of the community's hands. This is money that didn't circulate on Guam. As you can see from the report, they immediately sent $9,399,000 to Australia to pay for the cost of the lottery tickets. And if you go further down, you see that they paid $2,169,000 for the software license Yes, over the last 10 years, $5,348,000 was distributed in prizes throughout the community. That's 25% of what we paid out, Madam Speaker. That poor young mother that embarrassed me at Payless when she walked in with $10, paid $6 for the ticket, and bought the $4 package of hamburger, that's her 22, part of her $22 million there. And without blinking an eye, they had no problem paying $9.4 million for the sale, I mean, for the cost of the tickets, and $2.16 for software costs. This whole activity was supposed to benefit the federations. Look at the second from the bottom line there, federation share, $596,000. That's how much was given to the federations over the last 10 years, 10, not this year, Look up at how much they paid in advertising, $680,000. They paid more to advertisers on this island than they did to the federations that were supposed to benefit from this. How can they say that they're doing good for this community? I'm sorry. Yes, I was Secretary General for 15 years, but I quit because I could not be part of Out of the total of $22 million that they collected, if you add the federation share and what they claim is their net profit for themselves over the last 10 years, that's $3 million, that's one-seventh of what was collected from this community, one-seventh. The rest of it went out, $11 million to Australia, the rest was paid to management and staff, rent, advertising, and all kinds of other things. But the federation themselves got less than $600,000 over 10 years. Those of you that have been in this legislature for more than 10 years know that there was a time when you had a travel fund that was administered by Parks and Recreation. Those of you that were here knew, know that you gave more to Parks and Recreation for off-island travel than $60,000 a year. I would bet that between the 15 of us in this hall, the amount of money that we give to the baseball and the other sports fundraisers throughout the island annually, both directly out of our pockets or from our campaign contributions to put them on the back of T-shirts and to sponsor teams, I would bet that we 15 put out more than $60,000 a year from our campaign contributions and our pockets to send teams off-island. I hate to disagree with my main sponsor on this bill, Madam Speaker, but this is not providing good service to the people of Guam. And I don't need to be polite about it. The numbers speak for themselves. They're willing to pay straight off the top, $9 million to Australia, but they balked at us when we were trying to get 20%, or at least the main sponsor was asking for 20. The bill is substituted, leaves it at 4%. If I had my way, I'd have it 40%. If they can pay more than half of what they bring in, in software and cost of the sale of the lottery tickets to Australia, then they sure as can pay more than 4% to this They don't blink paying 50% to Australia, but say, "No way, you can't even get more than 4% from us for you." If I thought I could get eight votes, I would raise the tax thing in here to 40%, but I don't want to do that because I don't even want to acknowledge that these things are legal activities that should be taxed. And I don't care how great and how altruistic the desire is, or the intent, what the purpose of it is for. Madam Speaker, I went home last night after our long day and made the mistake of going to Al Jazeera. I just wanted to find out what the rest of the world was doing. And they were doing a special on human trafficking in Nepal. Where someone with the title of father, I can't, I can't even say it, someone who's supposed to be the father of a 12-year-old child, girl, had no problem betrothing her to some 60-year-old lecherous old man because he was willing to get the family some money. And the father thought it was okay because he was feeding the rest of his family. Does it make it right that you sell your daughter so you can make some money so you can feed your sons, who will go with you and beat her face in and mutilate her if she doesn't, if she defies and embarrasses the family by trying to run away? I don't care how altruistic the end is, it does not justify the means. And that's why, though I would love to amend this to 40%, I'm not going to participate in that. Because even 40% would not justify what these numbers show. And I'm glad we had, this bill was introduced and we had the hearing because it pointed out how much is being lost in this community. I almost fell off the dais when the bingo people from the golf course were saying they were making $9 million a year. At least, most of that is going back to some of the people that are coming in there. But I also have an aunt whose family had a beautiful track in Kenyatta, lost a tract of land, spent most of the time that I was on the bench in front of me for collections So this, it really, really pains me to see that we can continue these kinds of things on this island. Because these activities are really attacks on the poor, Madam Speaker. I'd be surprised if I had three hands go up if I asked how many of you go and play bingo, or have in the last year? And how many do it on a regular basis? We all realize that the chance of winning are really low. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 19. The will, we are here to disseminate the will of the people, pass legislation based on the majority's approval. Many times, we have discussed different types of limited gaming and gaming. Some instance, we've discussed the hypocrisy of this form of gaming and that form of gaming. It's apples and apples, Madam Speaker, but one is green and one is yellow. What I'm trying to say, Madam Speaker, is this type of gaming in our community has been clearly accepted, which is defined, errors, bingo, meaning, it's been clearly defined by our people and what's been accepted by our people for many decades. If we were to try to outlaw bingo right now, I'm sure none of us would be able to get out of this building. Madam Speaker, I want to focus on the heart of the bill and how I became a cosponsor of this bill. It's where these monies would be going. And I know we all drive around the island, but we've seen our sports facilities today, absent technology, or I had more, I had more from my community than what these kids have today with their sports facilities. I see the mayors trying their best out there, whatever limited resources they have. But you can go around and see today that a lot of those facilities are jungles today. Again, Madam Speaker, that is the heart of the bill for me. We talk about how do we find ways at the forefront to keep our children off the streets? But it's hard to even do that if they have nowhere to go. Especially in these isolated communities, villages, where children only can turn to their... can turn to their, whatever sports community center or, or sports facilities down the street, and you go around, it's no longer there. My mayor's trying, but that baseball field today where it used to house hundreds of kids, it's a jungle today. A small community that had 10 teams and used to share a field is no longer today, no longer there today. That is the heart of this bill, Madam Speaker. I know the retiring speaker discussed the issues of percentages and taxes and how this is going to work, but I'm focusing on the heart of the bill and where it will go. And clearly, a gaming activity or limited gaming activity that has been clearly accepted by our people and defined by law. You see these GNC athletes, they're not athletes today and they become special athletes, special rewards. They're not GNC athletes, Madam Speaker, because Paseo Stadium, the major sports complex, all these big facilities in front of them. These athletes become special because they start in their community. It's a community effort starting from the ground up. They are born, they're made in the villages. But these facilities are no longer there. The resources of this legislation would redirect that back to greater public benefit to support these facilities that were once there and we know are proven to keep our children, our youth off the streets. Now, little baseball field, Madam Speaker, kept me off the streets. And we can't find the money for it. So, Madam Speaker, I asked my colleagues to support this bill. And I, I want to reiterate, we do legislate on the will of the people. And again, we can define limited gaming, gaming, but we also have to be mindful of what the people have accepted in this community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion sent to Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to commend the sponsors of Bill 19-32 to recognize what a novel idea to identify a funding source and to earmark these proceeds to, in this particular case, sports facilities and other worthy projects. And so, what this bill actually does, it is, it forces this legislature to recognize that we do have gaming here on our island. And although the substitute version is substantially different from the bill as originally introduced, I'm not going to challenge your question as germane this, but I, I want to call your attention and the body's attention to page seven, on line 15, Madam Speaker. I spoke with the author and I asked if it's the intent, if we're just going to recognize 9 GCA 64.40, which says that cockfighting shall be conducted in a licensed cockpit, and not recognize that there's another statute, 22 GCA Chapter 13, that deals with cockfighting at the village levels? And so, I want to know, Madam Speaker, if it's the author's intent to limit cockfighting and prevent cockfighting in the village level? Because that's, that's something that we all have to recognize existed, exists, and I don't, I certainly don't want to limit this kind of activity. And I don't want this legislation to be the vehicle to do that without informing all the individuals that participate in this kind of activity here on our island. And so...
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I do yield, Madam Speaker, and that is an excellent concern. Once again, my understanding is, and that's why the Gaming Commission is very important, or at least the director for now, this is trying to amend limited gaming. So it's the recognized activity, the limited gaming of the village cockfights is through fiestas, which is under the authority of the governor by executive order. So my understanding is, you know, if, 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 if the gentleman, you know, from Agonya Heights would like to, at this point, tax that activity too, we can add that in here. But because we're trying to deal with the limited gaming that is actually a license that is issued by the cockpit, well, that's supposed to be issued by revenue tax, to, to regulate that business and to derive the revenue from that business, I certainly, you know, will consider that, 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 but I, I think that would probably be better left to the Gaming Commission once they're seated, or to the director to determine if those by executive order of the governor are something that would be applicable and how it would be enforced. Madam Speaker, the cockpit itself is actually supposed to have a tax individual there to, to, to monitor the transactions and the gaming that takes place in a cockpit to derive the revenue that transacts within that area. So I'll certainly, that's my answer to the, to the question of, of the good move, individual from Agonya Heights, Senator from Agonya Heights. And so, but we certainly can work on this together.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate his response. And, and I'll just clarify, I'm not moving to tax anyone. I'm just saying that on page seven, line 10, where it's subsection 5205, limited gaming activities authorized and unauthorized, there's the authorized use of bingo or lottery that is conducted by tax-exempt nonprofit organization is authorized in 9 GCA. Then number two, cockfighting that is conducted at a licensed cockpit and that all wagers are present at the cockpit as authorized in 9 GCA. And then Carnival or Liberation Day gaming is authorized in subsection 64.62. And then there's a, all other limited gaming activities are unauthorized. Now, if we don't recognize the statute that deals with cockfighting and authorizes cockfighting at a village level, which is 22 GCA Chapter 39, couldn't we then be, as an unintended consequences, prohibiting this kind of activity where the legislature has given, through the governor, the authority of the mayors to conduct these during their village fiestas and those kinds of activities? And if we don't recognize 22 GCA Chapter 39, we might, as an unintended consequences, be prohibiting that event, that activity altogether.
Madam Speaker, so I rise to agree if the good mover would move that as, as a redundancy measure to put into this measure to prove of, basically maybe just reiterating the fact that the governor has this authority and it's a non-tax activity.
Okay, so I move then on line seven, page seven, rather, line 15, before the semicolon, to add, and 22 GCA Chapter 39.
On page three...
Page seven, rather.
I mean, page seven, line 15 before the semicolon, to add 22 GCA Chapter 39.
Yeah, and so this is not the section that taxes them, but it's a section dealing with the unauthorized and unauthorized uses of limited gaming activities.
On the amendment? We're going to take a brief recess so we can look at that particular section of the GCA.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Esposito? The legislature is back in session. Senator Esposito?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I withdraw my amendment and maybe I can offer a different amendment. Madam Speaker, I withdraw my amendment and maybe I can offer a different amendment. Because what I'm trying to do is to recognize under the section Because what I'm trying to do is to recognize under the section that allows for limited gaming activities, that allows for limited gaming activities, authorized and unauthorized, authorized and unauthorized, the sponsor spells out certain activities and what's not recognized the sponsor spells out certain activities and what's not recognized is 22 GCA Chapter 13, is 22 GCA Chapter 13, which allows for cockfighting at a village level. which allows for cockfighting at a village level. And then you have item four that says all other limited gaming activities are unauthorized. And then you have item four that says, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized." So I would move at this time to replace item four with language to the effect of So I would move at this time to replace item four with language to the effect of those "Those limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam through executive order." limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam through executive order. And so then, Madam Speaker, with this bill passes without my amendment, And so then, Madam Speaker, with this bill passes without my amendment, we won't have to worry about the unintended consequences we won't have to worry about the unintended consequences and then riling up all the individuals and then riling up all the individuals who are in support of that kind of gaming activity. who are in support of that kind of gaming activity. And so I would like to offer then as an amendment, a new delete item four And so I would like to offer then as an amendment, a new delete item four and replace it with a new item four, all other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam. and replace it with a new item four, "All other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam."
On the amendment, Senator, you recognize? On the amendment, Senator, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you.
It's as authorized by the governor. It's as authorized by the governor.
As authorized by Imago la in Guam. As authorized by Imago la in Guam.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just have a concern and I don't know if the sponsor of the legislation will be able to respond. I just have a concern and I don't know if the sponsor of the legislation will be able to respond. But the way I read subsection, sum number four, all other limited gaming activities... But the way I read subsection, sum number four, "All other limited gaming activities..."
There's too many discussions going on on the floor, please. There's too many discussions going on on the floor, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the way I read this is you look at subsection four, the language as it exists right now Madam Speaker, the way I read this is you look at subsection four, the language as it exists right now reads, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized." reads, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized." And then the proposed amendment is, "All other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam." And then the proposed amendment is, "All other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam." Because I look at those two as separate presentations in terms of deleting the unauthorized activity Because I look at those two as separate presentations in terms of deleting the unauthorized activity and then opening the Pandora's Box and allowing the chief executive just by virtue of his direct authorization and then opening the Pandora's Box and allowing the chief executive just by virtue of his direct authorization for some of the activities to take place. for some of the activities to take place. So I'm just, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, Madam Speaker, So I'm just, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, Madam Speaker, but I certainly oppose the amendment just on that premise but I certainly oppose the amendment just on that premise because I consider them two different. because I consider them two, two different. Although I understand the sponsor of the amendment and his intent is to ensure that activities Although I understand the sponsor of the amendment and his intent is to ensure that activities that are authorized by law through the chief executive, that are authorized by law through the chief executive, through executive order, through executive order, that certainly this particular provision should not be restrictive in nature. that certainly this particular provision should not be restrictive in nature. I understand his concern, but the way I read it is two completely separate. I understand his concern, but the way I read it is two completely separate. One is, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized" versus, One is, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized" versus, "All other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam." "All other limited gaming activities as authorized by Imago la in Guam." So I consider the proposed amendment to the legislation as perhaps opening a Pandora's Box. So I consider the proposed amendment to the legislation as perhaps opening a Pandora's Box. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, before we go any further, I'm just trying to very quickly get some consensus here. Madam Speaker, before we go any further, I'm just trying to very quickly get some consensus here. You know, for me, the conflict exists if item four remains in this section You know, for me, the conflict exists if item four remains in this section where it says, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized." where it says, "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized." And so I'm wondering what happens to 22 GCA Chapter 39. And so I'm wondering what happens to 22 GCA Chapter 39. And so it would appease my concern if I withdraw my amendment and simply delete that item four. And so it would appease my concern if I withdraw my amendment and simply delete that item four. And so when we delete item four, then we're spelling out what's authorized in these sections And so when we delete item four, then we're spelling out what's authorized in these sections and any other areas such as the cockfighting authorized in 22 GCA Chapter 39, there won't be a conflict. and any other areas such as the cockfighting authorized in 22 GCA Chapter 39, there won't be a conflict.
Okay, so first of all, you're going to withdraw then your original amendment? Okay, so first of all, you're going to withdraw then your original amendment?
Yes. Yes.
And without any objections, so ordered. And without any objections, so ordered. Now you want to proffer another amendment? Now you want to proffer another amendment?
Just to delete item four. Just to delete item four.
Item four. Item four. Okay, so on the amendment to delete item four? Okay, so on the amendment to delete item four? Are you guys listening on the amendment, which is to delete item four? Are you, are you guys listening on the amendment, which is to delete item four? Vice Speaker? Vice Speaker?
My concern is the same as the Senator from Zonia. My concern is the same as the Senator from Zonia. I'm just not sure whether or not this will open Pandora's Box I'm just not sure whether or not this will open Pandora's Box and will have unintended consequences with other things. and will have unintended consequences with, with other things. So I've circulated an amendment that, I don't know, I mean, it's probably not appropriate at this point, So I've, I've circulated an amendment that, I don't know, I mean, it's probably not appropriate at this point, but it can and should, has to be addressed at some, at some point. but it can and should, it has to be addressed at some, at some point. Since we are dealing with limited gaming and the whole issue that's out there in the court currently. Since we are dealing with limited gaming and the whole issue that's out there in the court currently. And the amendment that I'm proffering is, "Nothing in this act shall be construed And the amendment that I'm proffering is, "Nothing in this act shall be construed to legalize or authorize any gaming machine or gaming activity that is not currently legal pursuant to Guam law. to legalize or authorize any gaming machine or gaming activity that is not currently legal pursuant to Guam law. Nothing in this act shall be construed as to moot, limit, negate, prevent, or obstruct Nothing in this act shall be construed as to moot, limit, negate, prevent, or obstruct any legal challenge to the legitimacy of licenses issued for the devices referenced in this act. any legal challenge to the legitimacy of licenses issued for the devices referenced in this act. And for the purposes of court challenges relative to the licensing of gaming machines, And for the purposes of court challenges relative to the licensing of gaming machines, the court shall not consider the enactment of this act." the court shall not consider the enactment of this act." It's, it's just to try to make sure that when we change the law, we don't change what is currently the... It's, it's just to try to make sure that when we change the law, we don't change what is currently the...
I, I, so I do understand that you have this amendment, I, I, so I do understand that you have this amendment, but right now we need to dispose of first of Senator Esposito's amendment, but right now we need to dispose of first of Senator Esposito's amendment, which is to delete four, line 17 on page seven. which is to delete four, line 17 on page seven. And you've registered an objection. And you've registered an objection. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment to delete? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment to delete? Speaker Panglinen, you had your hand up earlier. Speaker Panglinen, you had your hand up earlier. Are you still going to speak? Are you still going to speak? Speaker Panglinen? Speaker Panglinen?
To delete four? To delete four?
To delete four. To delete four.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think that, again, the concern was, what we were trying to do was Madam Speaker, I think that, again, the concern was, what we were trying to do was ensure that the cockfights that are authorized, not only in nine GCA, but also in chapter 22, ensure that the cockfights that are authorized, not only in nine GCA, but also in chapter 22, would continue to be a permitted, limited gate activity. would continue to be a permitted, limited gate activity. And so I think that what I, what... And so I think that what I, what... Deleting four would be, I guess, a broader approach to that, Deleting four would be, I guess, a broader approach to that, which I'm not sure of what the effect would be. which I'm not sure of what the effect would be. And that if, if the desire is to ensure that we don't prohibit And that if, if the desire is to ensure that we don't prohibit the village cockfights that the governor is able to authorize in, by executive order the village cockfights that the governor is able to authorize in, by executive order in chapter 22, I believe, then I would rather consider what had earlier been offered in chapter 22, I believe, then I would rather consider what had earlier been offered with the mover of the amendment on just then going back to two with the mover of the amendment on just then going back to two and amending two instead of deleting four. and amending two instead of deleting four. So depending on, so I would oppose deleting four, So depending on, so I would oppose deleting four, but I would not oppose to going back and looking at two but I would not oppose to going back and looking at two and putting in language that says, "And" to the effect that cockfighting and putting in language that says, "And" to the effect that cockfighting as authorized in the appropriate citation of chapter 22, I believe, as authorized in the appropriate citation of chapter 22, I believe, or whatever the correct citation would be, which is, I think, what everybody's looking to do. or whatever the correct citation would be, which is, I think, what everybody's looking to do. So in that effect, I, I'm not supporting the wholesale deletion of number four at this time. So in that effect, I, I'm not supporting the wholesale deletion of number four at this time.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator. I'm going to take a brief recess so you can have further discussion I, I'm going to take a brief recess so you can have further discussion because I know that that was proffered earlier and then withdrawn. because I know that that was proffered earlier and then withdrawn. And apparently there's some interest in it, so Senator would take a brief recess. And apparently there's some interest in it, so Senator would take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho, I understand you have a resolution?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I hear the concerns of our colleagues from both sides of the issue, and I'm very glad that there's recognition that if we leave in Sub Item Four where it says "All other limited gaming activities are unauthorized", that one might argue that only these kinds of limited gaming activities are authorized under A1, 2, and 3, Madam Speaker, and what's clearly missing is 22GCA Chapter 39, which gives the Imacalai and Guahan the authorization to allow for village-level cockfighting through executive order. And so what I think would be consensus here is if I withdraw that amendment first, that would delete Section Four.
Okay, so on the motion to withdraw, no objections?
Thank you, ma'am, and then to delete Section, subsection Four, that says "All other limited gaming activities are authorized pursuant to statute." And so you would take unauthorized to authorize, and you would say pursuant to statute. And so that way, you know, the overall reading of this, if there's other sections of the statute, in the case of 22GCA Chapter 13, the Attorney General-
Thirty-nine. Okay, so the new amendment now would be Page Seven, Line Seventeen, and it reads "All other limited gaming activities are authorized pursuant to statute." Is that correct?
Not all that.
Are authorized.
As-
As authorized pursuant to statute.
Pursuant to statute. Is that, that's the reverse?
And I want to thank Senator Uggan for suggesting that 10 minutes ago.
Okay, as authorized. So on the amendment, Senator Uggan, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My biggest concern initially when there was a proposal to delete Sub Item Number Four was the extraction of the word unauthorized, because if you look at the title, it says "Limited gaming activities authorized and unauthorized." So actually, if I can just add a, just share with you the original discussion that I had with the proffer, the individual proffering the amendment, was that the words would read "All other limited gaming activity activities, comma, unless authorized elsewhere by statute, comma, are unauthorized." If you notice, we retain the word unauthorized in there, but we respect any other legislation or any other statute that is already existing in court. So that was the recommendation that I made, but the amendment that now is being proffered, Madam Speaker, deletes the word unauthorized, and I do have some serious concerns about that. Thank you very much, Madam.
So, we're back to square one. Do we need to take another recess? Mikey wants to go out to play.
Does that accomplish the same thing where you say "as authorized by statute"? Because if it's not authorized by statute-
Another recess. To delete legislative findings and intend Section One, there is an objection. So there is objections. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the Respecho Amendment to delete Section One, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Amendment failed. Senator Respecho, you still have the floor.
So, Madam Speaker, on Page One, then I move to delete the words "These regulations were subsequently approved, but since the rulemaking authority did not allow for the repeal and reenactment of existing statute, the regulations were placed in Chapter Seven of Title III of the GARR," and so I moved to delete that sentence. Page One?
Page One, which is-
Lines Six through Nine.
There is an objection.
Only because I just don't think it's factually correct, Madam Speaker. These were adopted in the GARR because at the time, the legislature didn't act in pursuant to our rulemaking authority. By the fact that we didn't act, it caused those rules and regulations to lapse into the GARR.
Senator, I understand that these are actually notes from the compiler of law?
And yes, Madam Speaker, and it also was-
Senator, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, the reason for my objection on this is this is not, this is not litigating. We are not a court of law. This is the findings of the Attorney General as presented to the committee on the basis of their review of the legislation. So the fact of the matter is that I don't believe that whatever this body does with regard to this bill, if it should pass in statute, is in any way making a decision. It's a recognition of the fact that these are the findings of the Chief Legal Officer of the Government of Guam.
Senator Sonecklis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment because as the retiring Speaker clearly said, these are the findings of the Attorney General, but this is a matter that's currently in the process of being litigated. And for this body to be making a definitive statement on one side or another with regards to what's currently being litigated, I think is something that I'm not interested in becoming a part of. We need to clearly differentiate between the role of policymaking and the role of legal interpretation. Legal interpretation is the realm of the courts. So for us to allow this language to remain would be, in effect, the endorsement of this body of a legal interpretation that has yet to be decided by the courts. So I rise in support of the amendment. I believe that we need to be very careful about involving ourselves in areas that require judicial review. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Vice Speaker, you recognize?
I just rise to say I thank the good Senator from Dedado for recognizing that we cannot and should not be involving ourselves in litigation by making any statement either way. It's not that I'm in opposition, but this is a finding, and the Attorney General at the current time is the Chief Legal Officer, and that's his finding, period. It's not saying that we're supporting it or not. That's the statement of the Attorney General, and as I've said many times, I have never been in favor of an elected Attorney General because it causes too many problems. But it was the decision of this body to petition the U.S. Congress to do it. It was the position of this body to create it, and we now have to live with it. And that's his position. He is our Chief Legal Officer currently, and that's the position as it currently stands. When and if it's reversed by the court, then that finding will be reversed also.
Just to close quickly, Madam Speaker, number one, this statement is not attributed to the Chief Legal Officer, saying that's his comment. Number two, by deleting legislative findings doesn't remove his comment from the public record. He could still present that as his argument to the court. Deleting this legislative findings does not, again, delete his opportunity to make this presentation before the courts. But I just, like the previous Speaker said, I just don't agree, Madam Speaker, with the statement "These regulations were subsequently approved, but since the rulemaking authority did not allow the repeal and reenactment of existing statute, the regulations were placed in Chapter Seven of Title III of the GARR." And why would we, why would we want to, why would we even want to recognize that in our legislative findings?
Point of information, Madam Speaker, the committee report will clearly show the letter from the Attorney General's office that this is a statement that is an actual finding. That's right. And it's, so this is clearly in the letter, as attached to the committee report, of the Attorney General's findings. That's how we, how we put the statement into the legislative intent, recognizing this issue. As I spoke in the opening, Madam Speaker, in order to have this bill pass the muster of the Chief Legal Officer of the Government of Guam, we had to fashion it in such a way. That's why we, that's why we used the information provided to us by the Chief Legal Officer of this Government of Guam-
Madam Speaker, may I close, or is he getting another opportunity to close?
But I, just for the record, Madam Speaker, it's clearly in the committee report, so I have to dispute that comment.
So there's, there's an objection, and I've said that we're not correctly attributing this statement to whoever he wants to attribute it to.
But before you close, I'm sorry, I did not recognize Speaker Pangolinan. But I will allow you to close. Speaker Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think if we look at the sentence, it just, for me, it states, you know, just facts. I mean, the regulations were subsequently approved. It's true that rulemaking authority to departments and agencies as a matter of law do not allow these departments and agencies, under that authority, to repeal existing statutes, and for that reason, these regulations were placed in the GARR. I mean, that just gives a history of why we need to structure this bill in this fashion to ensure that we comply and are consistent with both the statutes that allow limited gaming and do not interfere with the statutes that provide for what, under gambling and limited gaming, is allowable and legal. And so that, to me, is, just gives you a history of why the approach to this bill is-
Senators, can you state your discussion outside?
Is constructed in this fashion, and I just think it just states that for the record, as part of the public hearing process, of why this bill is being constructed in this fashion and being amended in this manner. So I think it's, it really is not stating an opinion one way or the other. It's taking a note out of the Guam Code Annotated, which says of why these regulations or these statutes are in this section of the regulation, and why we're amending these statutes in this, in these sections of law. I mean, so I just think it really gives the history of why this bill is being constructed and why we're amending these sections instead of other sections of the law, Madam Speaker.
Is there anybody else before then? I have none. Senator Respecho?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the comments of the retiring Speaker make me want to appeal to our colleagues even stronger to ask that we delete these sections, because, yeah, you're saying, they're saying it's a matter of fact, but whose fact is it? If you want to be factual, then include all of the compilers' laws where they say "If a conflict in the statute exists." Even the compiler of law, Madam Speaker, did not take a position as to whether or not there's a conflict in the statute. And so I call for my amendment to delete this sentence, beginning with "These regulations," all the way up until "Regulations on Line Nine." I thank my colleagues for understanding that we don't want to do anything to unduly influence a matter that's before the courts.
There, Mr. Vice Speaker. I asked earlier if I could-
Just as a point of information, Madam Speaker, the difference between an Attorney General and a compiler is completely different. A compiler is a technician. The Attorney General, unfortunately, because of the will of this body, is the elected Chief Legal Officer of this government and can make statements. The compiler can just put in a note, waving the flag, "Something's wrong here," but he or she cannot and does not have the authority to speak.
Thank you for that clarification. There is an objection, so all in favor of the Respecho Amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Amendment carried.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. In line of what we just did, I move my final amendment on Page Two to delete the sentences, and here's where it gets tricky again, where it says "In its analysis of the bill, the Office of the Attorney General writes that is their finding that the rules and regulations submitted by the Department of Revenue and Taxation were not properly promulgated, as no record has been found that a public hearing was conducted or an economic impact statement was submitted to the legislature pursuant to the administrative adjudication law, and to continue to delete, notwithstanding the Office of the Attorney General's conclusions that the regulations themselves are not legal and certain regulations conflict with existing statute." And then I think we can leave the rest, but that's my amendment regarding this section.
So the amendment is to delete on Page Two, Lines Three to Eight, right after existing statute.
Yeah, and again, Madam Speaker, this position of the Attorney General is certainly a matter of public record, and by removing this in this bill does not prevent the Attorney General to continue to assert that those rules and regulations were not properly promulgated. I take the exception where at the time we were in the committee hall, I asked the Attorney General, the Deputy Attorney General, if it was his intent to usurp or dilute the authority of the legislature, and he said, "No, it's not," but they still take the position that those rules were not properly promulgated. And so, be it as it may, that's obviously for the courts to decide, and I just don't want it to be in our legislative findings so as to affirm the Attorney General's position. want it to be in our legislative findings so as to affirm the Attorney General's position.
On the amendment, no objections? It's ordered. Senator Respecho, you still have the floor?
I think the regular, unless there's, unless some colleagues don't agree, but I think the remaining legislative findings, it is the intent of Lieutenant Guam to substitute the language contained in original Bill 19-32 by adding language to 511 GCA relative to gaming. By doing so, Lieutenant Guam intends to place in statute the policy of regulating gaming activities allowed by law, collecting fees and taxes that would be due from duly licensed operators, and making funds available for improvements to Guam sports facilities.
It's only the underscore items are the ones that are part of the intent.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess the colleague's concern was that we just deleted part of that paragraph, and it may not seem correct. But unless there's no objections, I have no further objections to this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry, what was...
I have no objections to this bill, Madam Speaker.
On the main motion, and I have Senator Limtiaco next. I'm sorry? No, I mean, I did this words for the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, to have an opportunity to speak on Bill 19. Madam Speaker, I want to just start off by first reiterating what you had said when we started the session this morning. You know, you had mentioned that this legislature needs to, you know, follow the standing rules and to use the Mason's Manual as a guide. You know, and if you will just indulge me briefly, I want to try and draw an analogy between the current law and this bill. You know, I want to just briefly talk about Title V, Chapter 5, our Guam procurement law. And just to draw a brief analogy, you know, and if we look at the law and we look at the purposes and rules of construction, much like what you refer to, follow the rules, you know, and we talk about this and read it closely, you know, it says here, "To simplify, clarify, and modernize the law governing procurement by this territory, to permit the continued development of procurement policies and practices, to provide for increased public confidence in the procedures followed in public procurement, to ensure the fair and equitable treatment of all persons who deal with procurement system of this territory, to provide increased economy in territorial activities, and to maximize to the fullest extent practicable the purchasing value of public funds of the territory." And it goes on. And then furthermore, in the application of this chapter, it specifically says, "That this chapter shall apply to every expenditure of public funds irrespective of their source." And the reason why I bring that law up, Madam Speaker, is that this body needs to remain consistent. And so, you know, we had reference to another piece of legislation in which, when we talk about the laws that this body passes and this Title V, Chapter 5 is one of those laws, you must infer that the intent of the legislature was always to follow them, even if it applied to the legislature itself. If we make it apply to the executive branch and the judicial branch, we must infer that it was always our intent to follow them as well. So like you referred to, we need to follow the rules. We need to follow the standing rules. These laws require us to follow them because we ourselves are the one that passed them. Now, I want to, now, to the applicability of Bill 19. When we look at the bill and we go to Chapter 64, excuse me, Title IX, Chapter 64, and we take a look at the definitions that are governing law that we should follow, and we look at the definitions of what is defined in gambling or gaming, and I'll read straight from the law. Makes or accepts a wager involving money or anything of monetary value upon the result of any game or contest, holds any money or anything of monetary value in which he knows has been wagered in violation of Paragraph 1, sets up or promotes any lottery, or sells or buys any lottery ticket. And then it has a Section B here. As using this section, lottery means a plan whereby prizes are distributed by chance among persons who have paid or promised to pay anything of monetary value for a chance to win a prize. Right? And so if we kind of just dissect that, distributed by chance. Now, if we look up gambling in Webster's Dictionary or any online dictionary, you'll find all kinds of different forms and definitions. For example, to bet on an uncertain outcome of a contest, to play a game of chance for stakes, or an act or undertaking of uncertain outcome of risk. Definition of bingo is defined as a game of chance played with cards having numbered squares corresponding to the numbered balls drawn at random and won by covering five such squares in a row. Lottery is defined as by drawing lots in which prizes are distributed to the winners among persons buying a chance or an event or an affair whose outcome is or seems to be determined by chance. And what I want to bring up is Bill 19, much kind of like the analogy of the procurement law, this body needs to remain consistent. We cannot turn our backs at what we allow to happen up at the carnival, the bingo that we allow, the gambling that we allow at the fiestas, the cockfighting and the wagering, and then turn our backs at all other forms of games of chance or any type of gaming and say that that doesn't apply. The hypocrisy, and I thank the Vice Speaker for being confident enough to say that, even though he was part of GNOC, he quit because he recognized that hypocrisy, that this body can't just pick and choose what it would like to determine what is a game of chance, what is gambling, and what is gaming. And Madam Speaker, I had a conversation with all people, my brother John, and like all other older brothers, having a conversation with him is always a losing proposition because he's my older brother. And he talked to me about this very subject. And I want to reiterate, Madam Speaker, I'm not a gambler. None of my family members are gamblers. I grew up all my life watching them work their butts off so that they could give the younger children the opportunity to go to college. And that's stuck with me my whole life. I've worked too hard for my money to put it on any sort of probability of losing it. All the initiatives that have been put forward on our ballots, I voted against because, for me, I'm not a gambler. But I'm not going to ever attempt to tell anybody else how to spend their money. And I know that the Vice Speaker and many others in here, even myself, say that there are certain people that just, they can't control how they spend their money. But once again, it is their decision to make. I'm not a proponent of gambling, but I do want to point out one thing, that this body can't just pick and choose what it'd like to identify as gaming or gambling. To vote on Bill 19, knowing full well everything that we allow, or for the mere fact of never introducing any legislation to cut it off, you're just turning your back to it. How long will that hypocrisy continue? And so, going back to the analogy, if we're going to have procurement laws, if we're going to pass laws, it should apply to us as well. Going back to this bill and this discussion and whether or not the Attorney General believes it's illegal, or whether or not the Revenue and Taxation has already licensed certain machines, or whether or not we say, "Oh, all the ones listed in Bill 19, those are all okay." Madam Speaker, we have a full-blown casino at our carnivals. Now, everybody knows that that money that's used by the mayor's council is probably going to a good cause. And everybody knows that nobody really wants to take away Tan Maria's right to enjoy her bingo. Nobody wants to take away the village fiestas that, I must say, right, are in celebration of patron saints. But yet we allow that type of activity and turn our backs to it and say, "Oh, well, that's different." I'm neither here nor there on gambling. People have the right to do what they want with their money. I would never impose it on them. I don't do it. I don't like to do it. I work too hard for my money. But once again, Madam Speaker, when will we all remain consistent in how we look at it, or, I should say, when are we going to start taking the blinders off and realize that this whole discussion about gaming and gambling is happening already? You just drive up to Tezen, and you can bet your money on pay red, pay red. I remember when I was a kid, even at a young age, I was able to go up and put a dollar on a color. And I just wanted to watch the ball go around. We allow all that stuff to happen all the time. And then everybody, or I should say, we have certain people that stand up here and say, "You're legalizing gambling." It's, this body already did it. And the governor allows for it as well. I just don't understand it. And so, once again, my position on this is let's end the hypocrisy about it. Let's acknowledge the fact that it happens already. And unless we put the initiative in front of the voters, because our voters have decided on initiatives that have been put forth to legalize some sort of gambling in the past three elections, yet, however, there's never been an initiative to say, "Hey, what does everybody else think about what we allow already? Full-blown casino every summer for Liberation Day, under the guise that it's a, it goes to a good cause." And so, Madam Speaker, I know that I have five more minutes left, but I won't take them all. I'll end it there, and I'll thank the Vice Speaker for pointing out exactly what my time was spent on discussing, is that he recognizes it. We all must recognize it. And Bill 19, although it has a lot of great stuff in here, and I'd support it because I know that although the numbers don't add up, they still provide a benefit to the community, and so does all this other bingo stuff that does. I wouldn't choose to stand in its way. But it isn't any different just by the definitions of itself. It's not any different than any sort of game of chance. And everybody has to take the blinders off and realize that they're all the same. And it took my brother John to call myself a hypocrite in order to wake up and take the blinders off myself and acknowledge the same fact. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Maschita?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in reviewing this, I just had a question on page seven, line 18, about the nonprofit organization choosing to operate a gaming activity shall be open to an auditing of funds by the Office of the Public Auditor to ensure that the funding is being spent in the spirit of the nonprofit's charter and public benefit. Madam Speaker, my question is, is in reviewing the enabling statute for the public auditor, the public auditor is charged, is enabled to audit departments, offices, corporations, authorities, and agencies of the government. And the question is, does that enabling statute, or maybe there was a subsequent mandate that I am not aware of, that will allow the public auditor to now go into nonprofit charters? You know, Madam Speaker, we all know that at least two times that I can clearly remember, when the current public auditor was in front of us, she often talks about how short-staffed she is and the challenge of getting her work done. That's clear in my head. And I looked in the committee report, and I didn't see what her testimony was, and I didn't see that she said that she would find a way or that, you know, she was fine. So I just raise that as a point, Madam Speaker. If the author chooses to respond, that's fine, but if not, I'm just raising that as a concern.
Senator, do you...
That's an excellent point brought up by the senator from Timuni. Madam Speaker, under, once again, the gaming regulations, it provides for the Department of Revenue and Taxation to do that activity. The only addition with regard to this, and I'll tell you very much so, before the Vice Speaker became, you know, exercised his ability also as a chief investigator to come up with these millions of dollars and recognize what was actually going on, and we actually brought this activity and exposed it, then there was thousands of dollars spent to put out the information, and then we were able to get it. And when the $9 million came forward on one golfing organization, all this money, we started to realize that existed with, you know, with the blinders on. The fact of the matter is, Madam Speaker, we said, "Whoa, this is a heck of a lot of bucks." There's one organization that is the equivalent of two small agencies in the government of Guam, or one medium agency, just at $9 million. So, Madam Speaker, the purpose here is to, once again, as we were going to, and we will maybe through this bill, empower the Department of Revenue and Taxation to put that information together. It would be audited at that point from the public auditor, not for her to do all the work, per se, but to have that added teeth in the law to make sure that this is an audited activity. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, did you answer your question?
Madam Speaker, I understand what the author just responded. My point was public auditor being enabled by her statute to do this. That's my only point. Thank you.
On the main motion, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Senator Muni Burns?
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, so I was looking over this bill. I wanted to know, I have a question that I'd like to ask the author of the legislation, and it's on page seven, line 25, section four. It says repealer, and it says, "All laws and parts of laws inconsistent with any of the provisions of this act, except as stated in this act, are hereby repealed." And I don't, it's, to me, I think it's like a notwithstanding provision, but if nothing else happens to this, if this gets passed, if there's any provision that is not accepted by this legislation, then everything else is repealed. So I don't know if I need legal technical interpretation or ask the author to interpret, but I'd just like a better understanding of it.
Senator Duenis, do you yield to the question?
I do, Madam Speaker. I asked for a one-minute recess to ensure that we're speaking about it in the context of the section, and I'll consult with legal counsel. I know this was put together by my staff with legal counsel, and I want to make sure I'm answering in the context of the delivery.
You don't take a brief recess? Senator Duenis, do you have a response?
Yes, Madam Speaker. In consultation with legal counsel, this is a reference to, because this is becoming a taxed entity at this point, it would mean that if there's any conflicting laws that are identified, much as like was identified by Senator Limtiaco, they would be repealed, meaning if they prohibited the ability to tax this activity. So, if we pass this into statute that recognizes the ability to tax this, then basically anything that conflicts with that would be repealed.
Senator, was able to respond to your question?
Even more confused, because maybe I'll yield to the good Senator of Agania Heights to see if he can give me a, what's this interpretation of section four? Because I'm...
Then I think we need more recess, then for you guys to figure this out. Do you have the floor?
Thank you, Speaker Wampak. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with the author of the legislation and in hearing his statements. I'm going to go ahead and ask that we move to delete all of section four on page seven, which is from lines 25 and 26.
On the motion to delete, no objections ordered. Does anybody else who'd like to speak? Speaker Panglinen on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, before I begin the discussion, I'd like to go ahead and just make one minor amendment, and that would be on page four, line 13. Would just delete the words "no less than," and that would read then, "The tax rate on limited gaming activities shall be 4%." So, rather than trying to figure out where we're going to be on this, I think the discussion during the public hearing was that the rate would be at 4%. And so, this was, I think, a remnant from the original bill when it was "no less than 20" or something like that. So, I would say that the discussion at the public hearing was a 4% tax, and so just wanted to be definitive in that rate.
On the amendment on page four, line 13, to delete the words "no less than," no objections ordered. Do you still have the floor, Senator?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise into support of this bill because it identifies, I think, an activity in our community that is currently authorized by law, that is currently limited to a special type of organization, nonprofit organizations. People who are not in it for the money, according to the charters, we may disagree and we may argue whether they're in it for the money or not, but they by law have been recognized as an activity or an organization that conducts its activity not to put money in its own pocket, but to give money back to what is their purpose according to their charter and their articles of incorporation. It's not for profit. And so, that, I think, Madam Speaker, is why we have that distinction. That is why we have this distinction of gambling or games of chance, who can conduct them and what is, and who is legally conducting these activities. We know that gambling is illegal on Guam. It's pure and simple. And there are activities that are illegal right now that are happening, and that's why we have a controversy in the court, according to the laws of Guam and the interpretation of the chief legal officer of the government of Guam. And so, that's why we have a controversy in the court. This takes that issue and puts into statute a taxing scheme on activity that is legal, authorized specifically for a group of organizations that are not for profit. So, when we say, oh, my God, we're hypocritical, okay, yeah, maybe we are. But we know that there's a distinction and a rationale for that hypocrisy, if you want to call it that. So, when we ask the question of gambling, you have to distinguish with what is the existing law of whether or not it's for profit or not for profit. And the activity may be the same, but the motivations are quite, quite different. And the end results are quite, quite different, Madam Speaker, with regards to its impact on the organizations, the people, the community, and our lives here on Guam. You know, Madam Speaker, we're saying, oh, my God, we're all hypocritical here. Well, aren't we hypocritical? I mean, I had a proposal with here that says, let's be fair. If the government can reach back and collect taxes it owes from you for 10 years, then you should be able to come back to the government and collect your refund up to 10 years without having to jump through hoops. Wouldn't it be fair and non-hypocritical to make it even and fair? But no, we're making the distinction. We made the distinction in our vote that, yes, the government should have more power than the people, and that the government should have a right for 10 years to reach back and grab your money, or grab the money it belongs to itself because you didn't pay your taxes, but you shouldn't have that same right. You should only have three years. Isn't that hypocrisy? But why? Because somebody, or in the minds of people, there's a distinction between how much power the government has and how much power the people have. And that's the distinction here. What kind of activity of games of chance are we going to have in our community and who can conduct them? And we make that distinction. If you don't want to make that distinction, then everybody's free to introduce anything that says no distinction whatsoever. The people have distinguished. The people over the years have come forward and said, we don't want legalized gambling on Guam. They didn't say, we don't want nonprofit organizations not to conduct bingos so that they can have money after paying out the prizes to give to golfers who want to go off-island because their parents can't afford to send them. They're not saying that. They're saying, we don't want legalized gambling. They're not saying we don't want this. And when they do, then we'll listen. So, there is a bit of inconsistency here, but the distinction is huge, Madam Speaker. The distinction is huge. And if you don't think that nonprofit organizations shall have the ability to conduct activities of games of chance or whatever, of limited gaming activity, for the purpose of taking those proceeds and devoting them not to themselves, but to the needs of this community, to our young children, to medical referrals, to cancer foundations, to any other activity that benefits the community without putting that money in their pocket first, then don't vote for this bill. But if you think you can see that there is a distinction, then perhaps you should consider supporting this bill. But when it comes to the question of legalized gambling and for-profit gambling, you can't make that distinction. You can't say that I'm going to make the distinction of allowing legalized gambling and for-profit gambling because I allow games of chance to nonprofit organizations that's not for profit. You can't link the two and say, if I support one, then I have to, in order to be consistent, in order to be non-hypocritical, support both. I don't think you can. I don't think you can leverage yourself one way or the other. I think you've just got to make a decision whether you're for legalized gambling and for-profit gambling or you're not. So, in this, Madam Speaker, this is not perfect. This is not, you know, we may probably need to come back and take a look at this of what the impact this will have on the ability of these organizations then to take money that they've been able to raise through their hard efforts and the volunteerism of their members, to support activities that believe contribute to our community. So, what we're doing now in this, which is really, we're free to do so, but we've got to recognize what we're doing. We are now taking the fruits of the labor of these nonprofits and taking their money and saying, we're going to decide now, as a member of this body, how we are going to take the fruits of your labor and give it to others instead of having you decide that. Is that fair? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if that's fair, you know? But that's the taxing authority and the taxing power of the government. And when the majority decides that, yes, we are going to do that, and thank you very much, because now we, as a legislative body, can say, my God, you know, see what we're doing for all of you? We had nothing, we don't even, you know, we don't contribute to your efforts, but you're going to contribute to our efforts. But that is the power of this government, and that's what makes government dangerous, and that's what makes it good also. So, Madam Speaker, the end result of this, of course, is that we will provide resources from the fruits of the labor of these nonprofits, taking a portion of what they raise, and rather than having them decide what they're going to use it for, we, as a body, are deciding that it would be a good thing as well if we took a portion of that and gave it to our village mayors for activities in the villages that are going to support the development of our youth through sports, through facilities, through programs. Is that a good thing? It is. Is it fair? I don't know. But again, Madam Speaker, you know, for my colleagues to get up here and say, oh, my God, you know, we're going to have to support legalized gambling and for-profit gambling because I'm supporting this, you're never going to convince me that those two are the same and equal. They are not. So, Madam Speaker, I think that what has been presented and the changes that have been made, I think, allow something good to come out of this. It allows then the support of activities to our mayors and our young people and our young adults in our community to have the facilities and the programs to be able to give them a positive step in terms of their opportunities. And maybe it is, as we look at some of the uses of the funds that was pointed out by our good Vice Speaker, that, yeah, maybe it's not that bad, because when we look at what some of those funds have been used for, that perhaps we should have more money through the ability of this government to tax it and grab it, that it be devoted to, directly to the community and organizations in here, rather than some of the expense items in there that take the money off-island and do not provide a positive benefit to our community. That we increase, we increase the return to the community for the opportunity to provide a venue for these organizations to raise money for what they believe would be a good thing for themselves as an organization and for the community, as they service the community and its members as nonprofit organizations in here. So, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to articulate some of those issues, distinguish those issues because they are very distinguishable, and thank my good colleagues for their consideration. Situs Massey.
You're welcome, Speaker. On the motion, Senator Snikolas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I really, really, really appreciate the last two speakers and what they had to say, because what they had to say encapsulates for me the strife and internal turmoil, not just within this body, but definitely within myself over this entire issue. Whether it's this bill or another bill, the idea of should we tax it or should we not? The idea of is it legal or is it not? The idea of is it hypocritical or is it not? Are just so convoluted that it begs clarity for me. It begs clarity with respect to the position of this body, because I have to agree with the sentiments of what Senator Limtiaco shared. If gambling and gaming is evil, and it breeds too much evil on this community for us to even consider it in any shape or form, then how can the activity be evil when it's for profit, and how can it be evil when it's nonprofit? Profit, Madam Speaker, is not the deciding factor in that case. Profit is not evil. Profit is the closest thing to sacred in the secular world as far as I'm concerned. So, if it's a nonprofit activity, why all of a sudden is it okay? And I have to go back and reference the data that was provided by the Vice Speaker. All these millions of dollars in revenue that was generated by this nonprofit organization. Perhaps nonprofit is the organization, but definitely profitable is it to the participants of it. of it. So how would this activity be any less bad for the community than a for-profit operation when a for-profit operation is going to create jobs, pay taxes, provide money to the government for it to operate? Certainly, that is not evil. So certainly, a for-profit operation is not, is no more evil or no more bad for the community than a nonprofit one? So if gaming is a greater evil, and if neither profits nor nonprofits are any more evil, then we need to throw it down right now and decide, are we or are we not going to allow gambling and gaming in this community? Because if we are going to a little bit, then that's going to change entirely my perspective on how, my perspective on how we're going to approach it. Because you cannot be half-pregnant. So I would like to proffer an amendment so that for me, I can get clarity once and for all on this issue and be firm and confident in all the other decisions I'm going to make going forward on this issue. And that amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page seven, lines 11 to 20. To strike lines 11 to 20 and to replace it with no gaming, limited gaming, or gambling activities are authorized. I don't support gambling, Madam Speaker. I do not. Never have, never will. But if this body is not going to throw it down right now and make a definitive decision on that, then I'm ready to move forward with taxing other operations duly licensed by this government and making sure that those taxes go to where it's needed. Because profits are not evil. For-profit operations are no more evil than nonprofit operations. And if the overlying theme is that gambling and gaming is evil, then let's resolve that once and for all and move on. That's my amendment, Madam Speaker. I put it before the body for a vote.
On the amendment, which is on page seven, lines 11 to 20, to delete and basically replace with no gaming or limited gaming are authorized. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the amendment. And today, I'm very happy because now two of my colleagues who could, are young enough to be my sons, have taught me how to be a good legislator. And just because I was afraid that I wasn't going to get support for, and couldn't get eight votes, I didn't do it. Or if I got slapped down, I didn't do it. I backed away. Two of my young colleagues have shown true leadership and said, "All right, let's call it what it is and do it." And I fully support this amendment and hope my colleagues will also. Thank you.
Welcome. Vice Speaker, Senator Morrison, you're recognized. Senator Duñez, you're recognized. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Limtiaco, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I want to make sure that we are prepared to go down this road because I want to make sure that the entities that are going to be affected by this, many of which take this money and put it to good causes in our community. Just take our mayor's council, for example, and how often they come into our legislative body and say, "Give me more money. I need it because my people need it. The people in my village need it." Take the GNOC, for example. How many people have been able to go off-island to pursue a gold medal in the Olympics or any other gaming event for that matter? This isn't a bad organization. This is a great organization. What I want to make very clear, though, is that, like the retiring speaker and the mover of the amendment said, we can't turn our backs either or. You can't put the blinders on. We need to weigh the options. We need to weigh whether or not the good that comes of the good organizations in it outweighed the bad. The Carnival or Liberation Day activities generate close to a million dollars in licensing fees. That money goes to the mayor's council, I believe, or at least the general fund. That money goes to fix potholes in the villages. That money goes to cut the grass. I would never want to take that money away from our mayors. But on the other flip side of that, building on the theme of the hypocrisy, we can't say that X Machines or Pai Gow or poker or Texas Hold'em, those are illegal because, well, because we said so. So I just want to caution our body that we need to weigh both sides of it, and absolutely, let's vote on it. But consider the, consider the good that comes of it and weigh it against the perceived bad that comes of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I stand here in regards to the proposed amendment, perhaps with a lot of hesitation. Because repeatedly, and it's been highlighted that over the course of the last 15 years, the people of Guam have spoken on numerous occasions with regards to gambling activities. One I remember very distinctly was in reference to casino gambling. The other one applied to bingo to be situated at a particular facility, but with provisions that were fairly directive towards benefiting that particular enterprise. And there were a few others, Madam Speaker. I look at this measure and, or the proposed amendment, and I commend the sponsor for making a bold statement. And it's a bold move, not only a statement on his part, but it's certainly a bold move. But I stand here sharing some serious reservations with regards to supporting it in its entirety. Why? Because many instances, our people have come out with regards to cockfighting. And the most prevalent term that has been utilized, at least shared with me, that it's a traditional recreational activity. So it's authorized, with the exception of the mayors during their fiestas and with the exception of the carnival, it's limited to three cockfight activities island-wide. When we talk about bingo, I know that there's one particular nonprofit organization, Madam Speaker, that a close family member frequents. And that individual was asked not too long ago, maybe about five months ago, as to why she continued to do that in regularity. And she said, "That's my form of recreation." And Madam Speaker, it also happens at our senior citizen centers where obviously the pot or the games are not as large, but our senior citizens take advantage of games such as mahjong or bingo or a few other card games for recreation. What's the form of betting? Probably a dollar for every single game. And that's where my reservation comes in, Madam Speaker. Because it's looking at activities that we, as a community, have accepted. And I don't, I really don't think, at least from my perspective, it's hypocritical to say that a traditional gaming activity or cockfight hereon is, we can continue to accept it and authorize it by law. I really don't consider it hypocritical to say something that our community has considered, for example, bingo, as a sideline activity, as being hypocritical. Because our community has already come out repeatedly on many, many occasions and said there are specific forms of gambling that we just will not condone. And that, how did our community come out and express themselves? They went out to the polls, Madam Speaker. And that's the loudest form of making a statement with regards to any initiative to try to bring in gambling activities. So I look at this amendment, and although I find myself in a slight dilemma, I share some legitimate issues out there. Yes, one of our colleagues stood up and said, "Yes, but it's generating revenues that are going to an excellent cost." I understand that. Because that's the reality. You look at the carnival and the proceeds that are going to be generated from there, although I oppose a casino facility there, it was authorized, which is authorized by law. To allow the chief executive to make, render that authorized or provide that authorization to the mayor's council. Ultimately, those proceeds are going to go to the mayor's council, and they're going to utilize it for the benefit of our residents. But that's, those are provisions by law that have authorized these activities. And it goes back to, again, Madam Speaker, understanding that our people have said, "We, perhaps to a limited degree, can condone and accept certain activities," whether it be cockfighting, whether it be slide neighborhood poker, because we all know that there's a lot of backyard barbecue activities that may be taking place out there, or whether it be bingo. And I'd like to reflect back again to how our senior citizens continue to use that as a form of recreation, not to generate revenues, but as a form of recreation. And that's where my hesitation comes in in regards to endorsing this legislation, but I acknowledge, Madam Speaker, that if, in fact, that proposal had been presented to our people, whether it be through a form of legislation and we go through the public hearing process, or whether it been in the form of an initiative and our people ultimately make that decision that we're going to disregard all these other revenues, we're going to disregard all these other financial gains that these nonprofit organizations are benefiting from, that are, who, in which the organizations are reinvesting back into our community, that we're going to disregard that and say, we're going to just say no to any gaming activities that certainly that's a decision that ultimately will be made or can be made. But, Madam Speaker, I, I think I've already rendered my position and although, although reservedly, I obviously stand in expressing my reservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I must say I agree with, with some of what the retiring speaker said, and I'm sure he's, he's had a lot of experience in public service and I definitely respect his opinion and I believe him. I, you know, as a call, as a candidate, before I became a senator, I went out to these senior citizen centers and, and, and experienced how they live in the twilight of their life. And by them going to play the bingo daily, this is what they want to do. This is how they live. Who are we to tell them no? But there's also different sections of how we need to address this, and you don't want to have unintended consequences. And I, and I, and I ask you, and I take you back to a guy like John Haddock Jr., who made it to the major leagues, the first baseball player ever to make it to the major leagues. And I went out there, I flew out there, and I did a story on him. And then I came back to Guam, and I went to the baseball field that he became a baseball player on. And it's dilapidated. There's no dugouts. It's a baseball field with no dirt, no home plate, no pitcher's mound. So I asked, when everyone saw John Haddock become a Major League Baseball player and took credit as a Guamanian and a tomorrow-making good, what did we really do for him? We just made him work harder because there's a lack of funds that's been put into our kids. I myself, I agree with the good Senator Limtiaco. I don't gamble. But am I going to deny the right of the funds that could possibly help somebody become a better person when they go to compete off-island? I don't think so. So I think we have to be really careful in how we thread this because there's a lot of people in this body and on this island that, that does not agree with, with the gaming concept, which already exists on Guam. But do we tie the hands of our, of our youth when they go off-island to compete? And do they just want to be experienced to go off-island because they, they lack the funds? I was just in Washington, and I ran into the sophomore class from JFK High School at the U.S. Capitol. There were, I think, 15 or 16 of them with a teacher. They wash cars. So, Madam Speaker, I just want to make sure that... I too have reservations on gaming. But when it comes to helping our facilities as, as, as it's described in Bill 19, and if you look at these facilities, Madam Speaker, they are dilapidated, and it's not an isolated incident. You can go anywhere on Guam, close your eyes and put your finger on a baseball, basketball, tennis court. And there's nothing going on there. Because there's no money. We don't have money in the general fund. We have to wait for the federal government. There's no money to, to put dirt on a baseball field in Timuning or Talafofu. There's no money to, to renovate a, a, a Paseo Stadium that is in dire need of renovations. So where do our kids, where do our kids live their dreams? Because that dream is getting smaller and smaller every day, that we don't address some of these, what some people think as little problems. So I, you know, I, um, this is a tough situation, and, and it's, and it's something that I think that we really need to think hard about, and I think this body with this respectful and responsible debate here today should be able to come up with a solution. But I don't think we should take from our people that we have already given them. They need more, and I think we should facilitate that, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment to totally eliminate all gaming that is currently in place is, if indeed that is to happen, Madam Speaker, I really think we need to do it in a responsible manner. There are many organizations and activities set up, planned, and are there to help the upcoming year and the year after that. There is lots of work gone into, what are we going to do, who's going to do it, and who will the proceeds go to? So to unilaterally say it's all illegal and you may not and you shall not, I really think is unfair and not the right way to address it, Madam Speaker. And so I, I, I'm concerned about the unilateral statement that it's all illegal. I do agree that the distinction between certain gaming and other gaming has always been a concern of mine. concern of mine. And while it's a dilemma for some of our colleagues, Madam Speaker, it's not a dilemma for me. I probably am the only person in this, in this hall, Madam Speaker, who enjoys gaming. Madam Speaker, I'm sure you and I, maybe a couple of others in this hall, remember the Recreation Center in Agania. And every Sunday, I used to take Grandma there. And we played bingo with 500 other seniors, and it was a grand time. My grandmother and my grandfather are pioneers in education in this, on this island. Ten Jose, Ten Vicenta, Leon Guerrero, they were principals, they were teachers. And they, they introduced our family to Pagoda in Las Vegas, and we used to go every year and play bingo there. And then from there on out, Leon Guerrero family would have family reunions there. It was a grand time. But we are responsible adults, Madam Speaker, and surely, surely, there are irresponsible adults on our island. And they are tragic examples of really poor decision-making, of people who do put their children last, and people who do not know how to raise families. And those tragedies do need to be addressed by laws, by parenting, by supports, by counseling But Madam Speaker, an overwhelming majority of us are responsible adults. We work hard for our money. Most certainly, I don't have a lot of money, but I work for what I get. And if I decide that I wanna play bingo, that's what I should be able to do, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when, when bingo was, was banned at the churches, you know, the consequences of that for, for our families was huge. And perhaps that increased the activity of the nonprofits, because I talked to lots of seniors who, that's what their social activity is. They go and they enjoy seeing their, their friends that they grew up with, that they worked with, whom are all retired, and that is their time. And while for me, it's more work, because they all have 100 cards in front of them, and they're all dabbing, or they're all like, it's just like incredible how they figure it out. But that's their time. That's what they enjoy. And during their sunset years, Madam Speaker, they are entitled. For us to say that they shall not have that recreational opportunity is not correct. Now, if we are abusing them, that's wrong. But there isn't much for us to do on our island when we turn 70 and 80 and 90. And if they say to their children, I wanna play bingo, I suggest that we should say, what time am I picking you up? And you want me to stay with you? Or what time shall I pick, or shall I come back to get you? Cockfighting. I don't know much about cockfighting. It sounds like a brutal activity. But I am told that the people who do cockfighting believe in it. I can't really speak much to that, because it does sound brutal, but that's how the village fiestas decide they wanna celebrate. It's what they do. The casino gambling at the carnival and the fiestas, it's a decision made by the village people, by the mayors. And then they take that money and they invest it, and however they invest it. Again, Madam Speaker, there are irresponsible adults on our island. There's no getting away from it. I stand here for all the time. I stand here repeatedly and talk about our child abuse and our family violence. I do. But I also talk about there are other ways that we need to do to get serious, to eradicate that poor behavior, to get it off our streets. And I do not believe that totally eliminating gaming in this one vote is the way to do it. We will take away from the organization of these nonprofits who've worked hard to say, this is what we're gonna do, to raise these monies, to support these initiatives. We do this, their plans are out. We do this, it does not do respect to these people who contribute to our island. In the very least, we should call them in and say, how will you continue your efforts and your work? Do respect, Madam Speaker. And while I understand the mover of the amendment is saying, we're saying no gaming, then therefore it's no gaming. But I, I just think we need to think twice about the responsible steps to usher in the difference, the change that may occur from eliminating lines 10 to 17. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tomada, amendment, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, the last time I gambled, when I was, when I was about 13 years old, and I know I think I told this story before, but when I was very young, I used to go around the neighborhood and cut grass, pick up paper and whatnot, and, you know, back then, if you earned a dollar for a weekend, that was a lot of money. And so, one weekend, when they were having the carnival, I went down to the carnival and took my dollar, you know, gave my mom the 75% of my earnings, and she says, oh, boy, you can take the dollar, and, you know, I went down there and enjoyed myself. And I went to the over and under booth, and I, I put 25 cents down, and I won, and I kept winning. Man, I built it up, and then I got greedy, and I should've turned away when I thought I had doubled what I had put down. But I stayed, and sure enough, I walked away from there with nothing. And as a young boy, I was really very devastated by that experience, and you'll, you know, maybe I'll say, I'll bet you a lunch, but I certainly am not gonna put down any money on some game of chance that I have certainly no control over. I think with the, you know, with the amendment that was proposed, to either say, we will allow gambling, or we will not allow gambling, I think in a perfect world where, you know, things can be seen as either black or white, that sort of proposition would work. But we live in an imperfect world, and on the one extreme, there's, there's the no gambling, on the other extreme, there's the gambling proponents, but somewhere in the middle are those shades of gray that, that certainly would, would in some cases justify. Now, I know the argument was made in some of the other discussions that, you know, the, the ends do not justify the means. But notwithstanding, you know, the fact of the matter is that we live in an imperfect world. It's not just a yes or no, there's always that shades of gray in between. But for all of us, we certainly have limits as to how far we would then, you know, lean to one way or another. And I'm concerned that if we try and mandate a prohibition against gambling, all we're gonna do is we're gonna drive it underground. I mean, I think we have, history has shown us that when they tried to put a prohibition on alcohol, all it did was, it drove that activity underground, then we had bootlegging and, but it didn't stop it. It just forced people to think of other ways to be able to satisfy their wants. The, the other thing that I, I believe that a, that prohib, a prohibition would do is it really would force our community to live in a, in a, to force them to live in a world of lies and deception. You know, for us to think that if we say absolutely no more gambling, and to think that people are not gonna go gamble, we're kidding ourselves, and now we're gonna go, we're not gonna call it gambling, we're gonna call it, I don't know, we're gonna find some creative name to call it something else. But we're just gonna force our, our community to live in a world of lies and deception, because there will find a way to, to, to satisfy that want. I think that, I, I know that, for example, there's been a large outcry about the gaming devices. And the concerns that were raised was about how we found, you know, children were out in the cars up to 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, because people were in there all night long pressing that button, hoping that, I guess, the three matches would, however it's played, would come up, and then they'll win something. And for me, I, I guess we can, you know, we can, if, if we can allow one form of gambling, may, maybe the way, for example, that other form of gambling, let's say with a gaming device, that should be handled is, then let's put parameters on it. You know, the, the, the gaming parlors will only be open from 7:00 to 10:00 at night. You can go in there and press your finger off between 7:00 and 10:00, after that, it gets shut down, and you go on home. We do that with our bars. We have them shut down at 2:00 in the morning, or where, whatever time, 2:00 or 3:00. And so, for me, I guess that to bring, to bring it into, to, you know, that area where it's an acceptable shade of gray, in the case of gambling, is we need to take a look and, and put in the necessary parameters, to put it in the corral that we want it to stay within. And so if it's, we find that it's so detrimental to the community by allowing this thing to operate 24 hours, then let's put limits on it, the way we have with our bars, the way we do with our kids, I suppose we still have curfews. But to absolutely ban it, I don't know that that's really the answer. And so, Madam Speaker, I, I certainly would rise in objection to the amendment that's been made.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you have your hand up.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. I was so excited about it, I forgot to remind everybody, I mean, just, if you have your iPads, just go to pdn.com and you'll see about the story about last night, about a purse snatching, and to the person's credit, he admitted that what had happened was he had been given $350 by his mother to go register the car, promptly lost at gambling, and decided he was gonna try to make up for it so he could still get the car registered. I was talking to somebody from Adult Protective Services. They had to re-establish control over a senior person, because the senior person's child had been given control over the finances of that, of that man uncle. As soon, they forgot that the casino was opening up in, in Tezen. And that very next day, that man uncle had no money, save for what was on her quest card, because the son had lost everything that was in the account, because he had been given authority to, to, to take care of it. And I know all of you keep mentioning about the fact that these nonprofits are, are, are performing a, an exemplary, or at least a, a needed function in our community. I remind everybody, it is not, it is not the responsibility of the nonprofits to do what we as a government should be doing. If we need more money for baseball fields, and we need more money for other things on this island, for, to improve the lot of our children, then we raise the requisite revenue to address it. That's the purpose for which we exist, not to hope and pray that another nonprofit is established out there to, to take this responsibility from us. The casino up at, up at the, and the activities up at Liberation are supposed to go to Regalu. Has anybody looked at what the mission for Regalu is? Is to establish another home like sanctuary because of abandoned children. And to take care of foster parent, foster children. And we're told, oh, you gotta watch and what, what the effect is going to be. Again, I remind you of what I saw last night on Al Jazeera. Does the fact that the man has money now to, to, to support and put mouth, food in his wife's mouth and his two sons justify him selling his daughter off? If there are needs in this community, then we need to raise the funds to be able to address that. We keep allowing everybody to take care of it. I mean, when I was at the court, I couldn't understand why we had such a huge client services section. It's because mental health wasn't doing it. When I first joined the legislature, I had to provide, find some, find appropriation and get all of you to support me, to get substance abuse counseling and in-house rehabilitation, because it wasn't being done at mental health. And so three nonprofits have a contract for, for doing that. But that's not the responsibility of the nonprofits. Mental health should've been doing that, and we should've properly funded them to do it. I agree that maybe this is precipitous, that out of the middle of this bill that we're going to now outlaw all gaming, and I, and I know that it's not gonna have sufficient support here. But I really do think that at some point, now that our young members of this legislature have pointed out to us the hypocrisy and the fact that we can't turn our backs on it, we need to introduce something to address it, and to not continue to ignore the five, five initiatives that have been out there in the community that voted no to gambling. So though I say I'm going to support this, I know that there's probably going to be maybe three of us, but at some point, we have to take what the young members of this body have pointed out to us, the hypocrisy, that we have to stand and look it in the face and address it. How far are we willing to go? And I was up at Mark doing some research a few years ago, and I couldn't find any place in ancient Chamorah culture that had cockfights. That came with the Spaniards. Came, probably came down from Asia, at least in the artists that I, I tried to buy some of his pieces, it's, there were Korean ones that do cockfighting, and it's done in the Philippines. It's not traditional here, but it's been so long that people think it's part of the And though I, I support having, recognizing that I see, our man uncle want to have some form of, of recreation, as anti-gambling as I am, whenever, when I would go home to visit my mother, the one thing that I had to do at, at some point for her, before she stopped going to church and then realized that she, I mean, she was too weak to go out, go to church, that she could, didn't want to leave the house if she couldn't go to church. But before that, every trip that I went home, I took her to one of those stupid gambling casinos in California, gave her $100, and she played, and she was happy. But that's all she used, she knew. But not all adults are responsible. Last year, I had one of my aunts hit me up for $2,000 to pay for her mortgage payments that she hadn't made for the last four months. I know three man uncle siblings who are also relatives, who are living together in a small shack, because they lost a huge tract the family had because of gambling. I don't gamble, but I'm the one that's having to pay for all this. I don't gamble, but I'm the one that's having to pay for all this. So though we're not going to pass this, I think it's an excellent time for us to start to realize it and hopefully in the next week that there will be a, a bill to address this issue and that we'll have the hearing and bring everybody in that, that you feel you need to, that should come in and we'll hear it. But really seriously, we have to recognize as a legislative body that we cannot and should not expect that the nonprofits are responsible for doing what we as a government are supposed to do for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. That they should have to have a gambling casino so they can raise money for a home for foster children. That they should have some lottery to put up a baseball field that we should have done. I know my time is up. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, is there anybody else? Speaker Panguvian.
Thank you, Ensi Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have been listening intently, of course, and thinking about the amendment. I've been thinking about why we're here and why we have these kind of distinctions in the law. We're not the first legislature to grapple with this. This body of laws developed over the years, as are those that have preceded us on this body, have taken a look at our community and how it's developed and practices and things in our community that become accepted or desired. And that body of laws developed even in the area of limited gaming and gambling. We've had full-blown proposals debated before the body, passed before the body. We've had commissions that studied casino gaming on Guam and its effect and its desirability. We've had fact-finding missions of people going to Europe, I remember, to explore whether or not it would be beneficial for our community to have casinos and for-profit gaming. And all in the meantime, we've seen the community develop as it comes to taking a look at activities within our community and how should those activities be conducted. And that's why we have the distinction between for-profit gambling and games of chance, gambling to be operated on a nonprofit intermittent basis and not full-blown authority for unrestricted for-profit gaming. Even if we can't make the distinctions ourselves, our people have made that distinction. They're smart enough to distinguish between full-blown for-profit gambling and nonprofit activity and limited gaming. They have been able to make that distinction. The last initiative that our people voted on was bingo, electronic bingo, for-profit bingo, bingo video poker machines. That's the last initiative. And they were able to make the distinction between, do we want that or don't we want it? Because they knew, they know that the Pangasinan Association and the Gulf National Federation and, I'm not sure, 14, 15 others that conduct bingo operations on Guam, they knew all of that was happening out there and they knew that here's a proposal to do for-profit video machine bingo activity, full-blown, unrestricted. And they were able to make the distinction. And they said, nope, we don't want that. We don't want legalized gambling. So this amendment, I believe, ignores that our people are smart enough to make that decision. But if this amendment is going to cause members of this body to say, then we're not going to address any other bill in this body, on this floor for for-profit gambling, let's do it. Let's do it. If we need this to justify our position on the other one, then let's do it. As the retiring speaker said, there is a, our people have spoken five times over the last nine years. And they have been very clear. And we had hundreds of thousands of dollars spent by proponents who wanted to convince this community that for-profit gambling was good for it. They spent, one guy put a million dollars in a glass truck, I think. I don't know, I think it was five million maybe. Put it up, parked it in front of Revenue and Tax and said, vote for legalized gambling, this gets deposited tomorrow. And our people didn't fall for that. They knew, they can make the distinction. Madam Speaker, I'm ambivalent on, I'm just, I'm, I'm not a gambler, although I have gone to a casino, I have played a game, but I wouldn't classify myself a gambler. Not at all. Can I entertain myself with it? Yeah. Do I? I don't know. The last time I, last five times I visited my brother in Las Vegas, I didn't set foot in the casino at all. Didn't really have a desire to do so, even for entertainment. It wasn't that attractive to me. But there are people in our community who want to participate in these limited games of chance and yeah, we are slicing that nomenclature pretty, pretty thin by saying limited games of chance, limited gaming activities. But again, it's been done that way because those that come, come before us have been able to look at this thing and respond to our people. And if we want to address this issue in this manner, I just hope, I just hope that it carries all the way through. Thank you, Ensi Dusmasi.
Welcome, Speaker. Is there anybody else? Senator Siniklis, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just briefly, you know, it's not without reservations that we have to bring this topic up. My father's a cockfighter. I have a lot of friends who benefit from the bingo proceeds. Of course, we do have a lot of members of our community who engage in the bingo activities. So this is not something that's politically easy to address. But I thought it's necessary for us in order to be able to finally move forward on this issue, not only of 19, but on other issues that are, that are, that have been causing turmoil in this body the last few days, we need to just clear that, clear the chamber and bring this amendment forward, get this thing taken care of and figure it all out and then we can finally move on. So in, in spite of my dad probably going to be giving me crap on this for quite a while, you know, I think it's necessary for us to, to really, really make this distinction and, and carry on from there. So that's the reason why I proffered this amendment, Madam Speaker, and I, and I, I'm prepared to, to vote on it. Thank you.
You're welcome. There are several objections, of course, that have been registered, so I'm going to call for the vote. Senator Limtiako?
Pursuant to the rules, I call for, I motion for the call of the House. There are two senators that are not here.
Yeah, we don't know where, I, we can't, I mean, I think Senator Munya Barnes is in the building.
Madam Speaker, we should compel them to be here. To my knowledge, they, they, they don't have excused absences, so, once again, pursuant to the, to the standing rules, motion for call of the House.
Well, if there's a call of the House, then that means we lock the doors to vote Sergeant Adams, okay, we're all here then. Okay, so there, there are registered objections, so all in favor of the Siniklis amendment, which is to delete on page seven, lines 11 to 20, replace with the words, no gaming or limited gaming are authorized. So in favor?
I just want to be very clear that that amendment is meant for every single law existing on the books because if it's part of this act, it's only for the purpose of taxing it. I just want to be very clear on the intention of the author of that amendment. And so, so that we can ensure that it is sufficiently and legally codified and written,
All or nothing, Madam Speaker, all in.
I'm sorry? I say that again?
All or nothing, Madam Speaker, all in.
I did, I read the motion already. So Senator Limtiako, is your motion still then stands for a call of the House?
No, Madam Speaker. Now that all of our good colleagues are here, I withdraw the motion.
Okay, otherwise I would have to call for a vote for that. So it's clarified by, by the mover of, of the amendment that it's all or nothing. So all then in favor of the amendment, the Siniklis amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, going. Eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Passes.
Madam Speaker, I requested roll call. I only counted seven votes, actually.
I'm sorry?
Madam Speaker, I ask that we go ahead and vote on the measures and everything that's in the voting file now, please.
Well, Madam Speaker, I wanted to clarify by roll call what those votes are. I mean, that's a significant vote taken for the entire session.
One, two, three, four, roll call, five. Oh, no, roll call. I'm counting the roll call votes for the call, for the call. Yes, so, so there, Senator Esposito, Senator Rodriguez had called for a roll call, one more.
Madam Speaker, I also had a motion that I, I believe we could accomplish both at the same time. Madam Speaker, pursuant to the rules, I would also like to make a motion for explaining the vote during the roll call.
No.
Point of order, Madam Speaker, let's bifurcate the issue, please, and.
We're, we're going to do the roll call vote, yes, and I said I need one more call. So I have two. Who's the third person for roll call vote? Tony? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan.
Senator Uggan, aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako.
No.
Senator Limtiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Esposito. Senator Esposito, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. The votes are eight ayes, seven nay. The amendment passes. Senator Limtiako?
Yes, Madam. Pursuant to the rules, I'd like to request a motion for explaining the vote.
To explain the vote is that that's more voluntary if the individual wants to explain their vote. And you would need eight, eight votes again to ask the members to explain their, after the result of a vote has been announced, a member may be permitted by eight votes to explain that member's vote on roll call upon any question and such, any, and such explanation may be entered into the Legislative Journal if so requested.
Madam Speaker, if I may.
Yes, Senator.
And I don't know if it's a point of information of a point of inquiry. When I said in this floor that I did not support gambling, but I wanted to share that there are rules and, I mean, laws and statutes in place that have been governed by this august body, I was sincere about that. And what we are doing today continues to mandate that we are playing with people's lives. There is a court motion right now and we're at this again. And I just, I can't believe that something this important again, that we're going to take it and not give it to the will of the people then. So you know what, Madam Speaker? I always said I didn't support gambling. I want to share with you that as a former employee of public defenders, having to serve, help serve restraining orders to families because of gambling, which was here before, I had my reservations and I said, and I continue to say that I did not support gambling. But there is a bigger picture here that we really have to look at. And I don't know where we're going to go to this, if there's a, if, if I need to stand here and say that maybe we need to revisit this, I don't know. But I do know that the unintended consequences are even bigger than all of us in here. I just got calls. I just got calls saying, what are you doing to us? What are you doing to the funding source that we need to run these programs? I just need to maybe make a motion to reconsider, based on these texts that are coming in, for me to reconsider the vote to uphold the existing laws right now. for me to reconsider the vote to uphold the existing laws right now.
Madam Speaker, I withdraw my motion for explaining the vote, if there's a motion on the floor to reconsider. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Munya Barnes has made a motion to reconsider the votes, yep, she did. There's an objection. All in favor of the reconsideration of the votes that were taken on the amendment? The motion is to reconsider first the actions of the body. And that's only, that's the first thing we're doing, is to reconsider the actions of this body. And there's an objection, all in favor of the reconsideration, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. Can you please raise your hand again, for the clerks recording, I'm sorry, I moved too fast. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you got the clerks, you haven't counted? Okay, so the motion carries. So, we're asking the clerks again to take the vote. Yes. It's recorded earlier, it'll be recorded again. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiako. Senator Limtiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, nay. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Esposito. Senator Esposito, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. The amendment, and on the reconsideration and revote, is that it's now seven ayes and eight nays, so the amendment failed. Senator Siniklis, I know you had an amendment, and you still have the floor.
I conclude my, my discussion on Bill 19, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak who have not spoken? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, good afternoon, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I really appreciate the discussions we've been having on Bill 19, and if I was a naive person, or if someone out there who's listening, the general public is naive, when we discussed about this gamings and these gambles that are happening today, you would be shocked and think, "What? Gambling and gaming is happening today? We didn't pass Bill 20, how can it happen?" Bill 20 was condemned, Madam Speaker, of being the vehicle that would legalize gambling on this island. But you know, it's okay. We knew we had this Bill 19. And if I'm not mistaken, and please, he can correct me if I'm mistaken, but in his opening remarks, he said that what they're doing here in Section 5205 is now putting it in statute to make it legal, to make these activities legal. Madam Speaker, you mean to tell me these activities, these gaming, these gambling activities have been happening on our island illegally? Madam Speaker, we're saying now we're gonna tax these gaming and gambling activities 4%, because they're not being taxed today. Madam Speaker, with all due respect, one of the authors here, I remember, from one of the previous sessions, stood up and said he'll fight gambling tooth and nail. And I'm sure some of us, if not all of us, remember the story about the mother with three kids, going in to pay less, kids have the sniffles, went in there, had the $10, paid $6 for a lottery ticket, and $4 left to feed the family. Well, Madam Speaker, you know what this bill's gonna do? It's gonna lessen that $4 for her family. That's what it's gonna do. It didn't take my bill to promote gambling and gaming, because it's already occurring. And, Madam Speaker? We're seeing here, page six, the new 4% that we are assessing on these limited gambling, gaming, whatever you wanna call it, activities, are gonna go to, first one, to the Mayor's Council of Guam, one-third of it. The other one-third, Madam Speaker, to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the repair and construction of its facilities. The other one-third, to the Department of Education for the repair and construction of its sports facilities. Madam Speaker, revenues, proceeds from these gaming, gambling activities are gonna go to these good causes. So I guess it's acceptable. We're okay to give it to these causes, but it's not acceptable to collect revenues from existing gaming or gambling, whatever you wanna call it, and give it to our hospital.
Please keep your discussion to Bill 19.
I am, and I'm building my...
We're not talking about it.
No, I'm building my foundation, because I do have an amendment. And I thank one of our good colleagues, I respect him very, very much, the Vice Speaker, where he said, "It's not the jobs, it's not the job of our nonprofits to do the work that our government needs to provide our people in healthcare, public safety, and education." And I wholeheartedly agree, Madam Speaker. That's why when the QC recipients, qualified certificate recipients, say, "Well, you know what, I don't pay GRT or income tax, because I got this QC, but you know what? I give substantial amount to the GCC or the UOG nursing program, I donate here, I donate there." What I tell them, that's not your job, that's the government's job to provide those services. But they use it to justify the huge benefits they receive in these tax abatements. Another proposal that I had would do just that, Madam Speaker. It would ensure that the government raises the revenues, collects it, and provides the service to our people. And we've all heard it here, this session, the hospital is our priority, we need to take care of our hospital. We've heard our colleagues say that every single one of us here wanna find ways to help the hospital. In the research I was doing in my office a few weeks ago, we came across this Public Law 27-130. We read the veto message that was sent down by then-Governor Camacho. The bill that he vetoed didn't have anything to do with the hospitals, tax credits given to companies that would provide assistance for Activity Center, I believe, or something up at UOG. But in that veto message, Madam Speaker, he took the opportunity and said, "You know, I'm vetoing this because we need the revenues." And he cited specifically, "Our hospital is in a financial crisis." That was in 2004, Madam Speaker. And I'm sure the hospital was having problems even prior to that. But you know what we've done over the years, Madam Speaker? We've said, "Okay, the hospital, you have problems, you're drowning in debt, well, we'll authorize you, go borrow money, solve your problem, and check us back when it's good, or when you need the help again." We never got to the root of the problem, Madam Speaker. And so now, that we have this opportunity, because for some reason, discussion on another piece of legislation to do practically the same thing we're doing with this bill, Madam Speaker, has been suppressed. I see an opportunity, Madam Speaker, to move that piece of initiative into this piece of legislation. And you know what, I'll say it right now, because it's no secret, we've had discussions with the authors of this measure to perhaps merge these two bills together, because you know what? It did the same thing. It taxed revenues on gaming devices, gaming activities, and diverting it into specific causes. And so, Madam Speaker, if I can get... I'd like to proffer an amendment, Madam Speaker. It's being circulated now. Madam Speaker, this amendment is a conjunction with seven others, seven others in this hall today. It took their concerns into consideration, and we put it into this one amendment. And I invite my colleagues who are part of this amendment to join me. In being able to articulate what these amendments are. But I'll do my part, Madam Speaker. What it does, Madam Speaker, is practically what Bill 20, this whole amendment is Bill 20, and I wanna be very open about it. And, Madam Speaker, what it does is provide the financial assistance the hospital needs, but it also sets up a mechanism where we're gonna stop the bleeding that's happening at the hospital, we're gonna set up an urgent care center and fund it properly. One of the major points of this amendment that we've removed entirely, which was originally on Bill 20, is the borrowing authority that was listed in this bill. We've took it out because we've heard concerns that, you know what? What bank is gonna use proceeds from these gaming or gambling devices as a source of repayment for a loan? Even though I don't, you know, Madam Speaker, I don't believe, that's a strong argument, because some of these people who operate these devices have been operating in Guam for a couple decades, are banking in these financial institutions. If it's good enough for them to receive the business of these companies and banking their institution, why isn't it good enough to use as a source of repayment? And, Madam Speaker, let me tell you something, tell our colleagues something here. One of the arguments we've heard is that this initial, this amendment is gonna legalize, is going to legitimize these particular devices, because now we are imposing a new fee on them, and we're increasing their fee. Madam Speaker, many legislatures ago, these same devices, if you wanna call it legitimized, were already legitimized. Their fee for these devices was $25 at one point, but this body, a few legislatures ago, amended that and increased it to $500 from $25. So, Madam Speaker, if you call that legitimizing, if you call adding a new fee, increasing their fee legitimizing, well, Madam Speaker, it was legitimized already. What this amendment does, Madam Speaker, is revenues as received from these particular devices that we list out in this amendment, 60, up to 60% of the revenues received will go towards the hospital, be deposited into the GMHA Healthcare Trust and Development Fund, and be allocated for the operation of an urgent care outpatient center. The remaining, Madam Speaker, will be subject to legislative appropriation. And, Madam Speaker, this amendment specifies what that 40% now may be used for. And I'll read it, line 10, page 8. "These funds can now be used as local matching funds for the Medicaid program, specifically for patients seen and treated at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, or, in an effort to free up cash flow for other expenses of the Authority, funds from this item B may be used as additional debt service payments for any existing borrowing by the Authority. And three, funding for the establishment of new revenue generating medical services, and finally, for funding for medication supplies and medical equipment." We prescribe what these funds may be used for, however, it still must go through this body for legislative appropriations and approval. And so, Madam Speaker, I've asked my other colleagues, now that we have discussed Bill 19, and we now know that it does pretty much the same, the same thing as what Bill 20 was doing, was ensuring that tax revenues from gaming, gambling devices, whatever it's called, are collected and diverted into specific causes. So again, this is a way, Madam Speaker, for us to be able to help the hospital and ensure that we get to the root of the problem. Thank you very much.
On the amendment, Senator? On the amendment, Senator-
I'm going to rise to a point of order. I don't think this amendment's germane to Bill nineteen.
Take recess. We're going to take a dinner break and we expect to try to be back here by seven- seven o'clock? Okay, seven o'clock.